I call this meeting to order. I ask you all to stand.
For the pledge of allegiance? And Mr. Bateson, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
I ask you all to remain standing. Today is June 6th. It's the anniversary of D-Day. A lot of our military lost their lives to both protect our freedoms, protect us, and give us the right to hold meetings like this. So I'd ask us to remember, keep them in our thoughts, and just take a moment of silence, please. All right, our first order of business, we have a number of minutes to approve.
Take a motion and take them all together.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and...
I'm going to stay on the minutes.
Good, all right, so make that in one vote. We're going to take all the minutes together. Any changes, edits, or comments to the minutes?
I didn't see any, I was keeping track of them as they were coming through, so we're good.
All right, so I have a motion to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting April 17th, regular meeting April 18th, special meeting May 3rd, and special meeting May 15th. Make a first on that? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
All right. Got that Sheila?
Yeah.
All right. Then we have a series of recognitions today, which is rather exciting. So we're going to take these one at a time, starting with, we have some recognition, this is item four on the agenda, of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Junior Achievement Team for winning the 2018 National Junior Achievement Championship. Is there somebody here from the team?
We've got everybody in line.
Okay. Why don't we bring the team in? Let's start this. Now we've got, there are four members on this team, right?
No, this is four.
Right.
We missed out on our member.
Okay, and item five, we're going to recognize, how many members are on the total team?
There were four and four, but we've only got three right now.
Got you.
We're missing one. We don't know if he's coming, or...
Yeah, he's up for work.
Okay, so there's two recognitions we're doing. One is for the Ludlow team for winning the national, and second is for the Ward Junior Achievement Team for coming in second in the Western Connecticut, A34, right?
So, slight correction. Fairfield Ward won our JA Western Connecticut...
Okay.
No, no.
Ludlow. Ludlow won the Junior Achievement Western Connecticut Competition, and Ward came in second. Winning first place in Junior Achievement Western Connecticut Competition allowed them to then participate in the National Junior Achievement Virtual Titan Business Challenge, and they won first place in that as well.
Okay, well, thank you. So that's tremendous. And I think everybody will agree that the Connecticut economy can certainly use the help. The, so it, with that, first of all, any comments from my colleagues?
Congratulations on that. When I was in high school, I did junior achievement too, and I couldn't imagine my group getting past even, at the time, getting past Tomlinson, but moving on, anything like that. And to win the nationals is really impressive, so congratulations.
Yeah, great job, guys. We're all proud of you, and especially moving on to the nationals and taking that. Good job, thank you.
It'd be very proud.
And you'd be out forty-eight, forty-seven other teams in the national competition, so it was fantastic.
As much as we're focused on the young people here today, and certainly congratulations on what you've been able to accomplish, I think that one of the things that I've seen over the past few years is the consistency of excellence that is coming out of both Ward and Ludlow. And I think we've had a chance to have different teams from Ward and Ludlow up here to be recognized for what you've done in junior achievement. I think that's just tremendous skill set at this age, and it's going to bode you well no matter what you do. But as I mentioned, if you could stay in Connecticut and help sort out some of our community, that would really help. We have some, let's see, Meg?
Yes.
Okay, did you have anything?
I actually have, we have certificates for them, as well as, with their winnings, they actually won scholarship money for college.
Wow.
So we have to go with them. Let's do this quickly. We have from Ludlow, Michael?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And Samantha?
Thank you.
Nathan. Where's Nathan's check? Where's Nathan's check?
Thank you.
Okay, and... Bottom, bottom. Did you?
Yep, thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, and Ward, Kayla? Michael? And Lily?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. In addition, we have a certificate for each of you from the town, without a check, I should point. So, gentlemen, why don't we hand these out?
Sure.
Excuse me. What we're going to do is just ask you to come up here. Why don't we do this? That's the word. All right. Mikey Borg. All right. And Samantha Keen. And Nathan Roberts. You've got to help me with this. Ee? All right, ee, congratulations. Is Tom Rendell here?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom, come on, get up here. Congratulations. Tom is the advisor coach who put all, no, Tom, stay up here. The Lily Trnisky? Is it Trnisky?
Yeah.
Oh, Joe, you're going to have to help me with this.
Joe's not here.
Joe's not here. All right, good. You can get this, can you get this to Joe? Okay, thank you. All right, Kayla Cross now? All right. Michael Murphy? Is Anna Moses here?
Yep.
Anna?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Very nice, yeah, thank you for everything.
All right. And let's see if we can get a photo up here. I do want to point out that, I want to give special recognition to the coaches that kind of helped through all this. My dad was a coach in a whole other sport, but I know how important coaches are in putting all this together, and you've provided the consistency over the years to give our kids this opportunity, so I want to thank you for that. I'm going to get down here and get some pictures.
I think while you're getting ready for the picture, Mr. Petrow, I should inform everyone that this competition on the state level took place at a major snowstorm. These kids came in and the coaches came in on their day off from school called by Dr. Jones, but they still came in with her permission to participate in this activity, so who knows to them for that as well.
All right, fantastic. Come on, everybody get...
Scorch down.
Let's scorch in here, guys. All right, we got all that? All right, great, thank you. Big question. Any juniors?
Yes, Joe and I are juniors.
Okay, we'll see you next year, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's four. Amazing, they've really done that a few years in a row. It's amazing. All right, item six is recognition of a Fairfield Ludlow High School student for winning the 2018 YMCA National Swim Championship in the 50-meter freestyle and the 100-meter freestyle. Now, we've got a certificate here, and this is for Sarah Grinnalls. Sarah can attend. She has a, actually a shoulder surgery, it looks like, that's keeping her from being here, unfortunately, but I'm just, again, overwhelmed with the fact, the level of accomplishment for our students in terms of winning another national championship, and I know she's, I hear that she's going on to a very good college from here. So she'll be able to keep her swimming career going at that level. So she's here, not here, we're going to have to get our certificate to her. But Sarah, get well soon and continue your career, and thank you for making our town proud. Do you guys have anything to add to that?
Congratulations, Sarah. Good job.
All right. Next up, item seven, recognition for a Fairfield resident, wow, for receiving the 2017 FEMA Outstanding Citizen Corps Council Member Award. Does anybody have any background on this who can fill us in? Or should I just spill the beans and say who this is? We have a proclamation here that recognizes Norma Peterson for doing a... Norma, we can't properly embarrass you unless you're standing up there for the podium. The, obviously, you've been doing a phenomenal job in our CERT program for so long, and it's getting recognized at the state level in terms of what you've done, and I just, from a standpoint of the town, thank you for all you've done. I know we've worked through several storms together, and you've done, and also, you've also offered some comments and suggestions on how we can improve the program, and I very much appreciate that. So thank you here. Gentlemen, any comments?
No, congratulations. I know that hours of dedication you give to the town, and everybody here from the CERT team as well gives to the town, and it's more than a passion for you. It's very visible in becoming known as the go-to person for this very program, so congratulations.
Great job, Norma, we're all proud of you, and we appreciate the volunteering efforts, we really do. Thank you.
And Norma, we have a proclamation here from the town, and I know how you'd love me to read it all, but I will point out just that it is for receiving the prestigious National 2017 FEMA Outstanding Citizen Corps Council Award, and in recognition of that, I am declaring throughout the town of Fairfield that Wednesday, June 6th, is Norma Peterson Day throughout our town. I guess we should give you a chance to say something in rebuttal.
Not much to be said, but I thank you for the recognition, and I also want to, as you have said, recognize one of the more successful outreaches of the Citizen Corps Council of the State, and that is our own Fairfield Community Emergency Response Team. We have over 120 members now, and in no small part thanks to the support of the first selectmen, as well as our fire department. We have logged over 1,200 hours in 2017, including training and activation, so thank you to all these wonderful CERT volunteers.
Yep, and again, I think you mentioned the training, and I can't, I do want to emphasize that because a lot of people don't see the training that's done by this group, all right? So as much as you're volunteers, I know throughout Storm Sandy, how smoothly that went because of your help when we set up the shelter and housed up to 400 people over that time, and I know there've been drills on biohazards and other things that you've gone through to do to make sure that, hopefully, none of that ever happens, but if it does, it's good to know we'll be prepared and have experienced and well-trained hands on deck to help our community through that, so thank you again. We have a proclamation, shall we stand up and officially present this?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Stay up late. Thank you.
Good job, Norma, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Let's see, I should point out that we had also Fire Chief Dennis McCarthy, Deputy Chief Karen Dunn, I think Cindy O'Neill Vitale was sick right now, so she wasn't able to make it, and about 24 Fairfield CERT members. Thank you, guys, for showing up. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you would like to. And I wasn't sure, did Chief McNamara get here? I know he was trying to make it, but he had some scheduling conflicts this afternoon. All right, so thank you all very much, and Norma, thank you again. All right, moving on to item eight, reappointments, and this is to here, consider and act upon the following reappointments, we'll take these one at a time. Item A, to the Ethics Commission, this requires unanimous Board of Selectmen vote, and then followed by RTM approval. Marguerite Toth, Republican, 994 South Pine Creek Road, for a term of 718 to 720. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Any comments from the board?
I'm thrilled personally that Marguerite is going to serve again. I think she's been a wonderful addition to the Ethics Commission, so thank you, Marguerite.
Yeah, thanks Maggie, really happy you want to do this again.
And Marguerite, you've earned respect from, I think, all constituencies in town. I want to thank you for continuing your public service and helping us out in this. I know, I hope that the Ethics Commission is not an overwhelming task, and we don't have a lot of challenges before it, however...
The last part about that commission is that we have such great employees and residents in this town, we get very few inquiries that come through.
Well, I hope that it will be sunny weather in the days ahead, and you will be very unbusy.
Thank you very much.
All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, it's unanimous, congratulations, and thank you. Next up, to here, consider and act upon the appointment for Fair TV Commission, this also requires unanimous Board of Selectmen vote and also RTM approval. Jim Quinn, Democrat, 508 Wilson Street, for a term of 718 to 721, and Stuart Streisler, unaffiliated, 56 Lamplighter Lane, for a term of 718 to 721. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second.
Second.
All right, any comments from the board?
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
All right, now Stu's here, there he is, I saw you earlier, is Jim here?
I don't think so, I don't think he made it.
Okay. Just in following, obviously, the Fair TV Commission is an integral part, as we're seeing today, of our, both our board and commission operations, but really is having an open democracy here in Fairfield. I don't think there's anything more, that contributes more to transparency than Fair TV, so thank you for your work and your dedication to having that done. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was also unanimous, so next stop is the RTM. Stuart, thank you very much. All right, next up, now appointments. This is to here, consider and act upon the following appointments, and we'll take these, we've got two, to the Golf Commission, okay to do those together?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. To the Golf Commission, to here, consider and act upon the following, Priscilla Schultz, Democrat, 108 Flax Road, term 414 to 419, this is to fill a vacancy, and then second is Peter Seacrest, unaffiliated, 505 Toilsome Hill Road, for a term of 416 to 421, is to fill a vacancy created also by a resignation. May I have a motion to accept both those?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
All right, any comments?
Thank you for your willingness to serve on the Golf Commission.
Yeah, no, thanks, guys, looking forward to it. It's going to be a busy couple of years with what we've got coming down the line.
Yeah, I think, and I'll echo their comments and say simply that we've got, both the Golf Courts have been rated one of the top ones in the state, and is an important amenity to our town in terms of establishing value for residents. Second, we're in the process of having a building committee look at the building structure itself and look at how we can redo that, and that's taking place. And lastly, a number of comments have come up about what we can do with that facility, with that land, is there a way to make that more valuable for 12 months a year? And I know Parks and Rec is looking at that, and obviously, the Golf Commission will have an important voice in what's taking place with all of that. So with that said, any comments from the public?
Seeing none, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous, thank you. And congratulations, Priscilla and Peter. Next up, an appoint, now this is an appointment to the Ethics Commission, and this requires unanimous Board of Selectmen vote and RTM approval. And this is Alex Trumvikki, Democrat, 743 Stratfield Road, for a term of 1117 to 720. So may I have a motion to accept that appointment?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments from the board?
Thank you for wanting to serve, appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I look forward to it. I remember working, I think you worked with him too on the RTM, right? Years ago? Alex, yeah, great guy, I'm glad he's interested in this.
And I think that one of the keys in the Ethics Commission is that, again, we don't, we hope we don't have much business for the Ethics Commission, but if we do, we want to know that the folks there are well-respected by everybody in town, so that the decisions they make are also well-respected and accepted.
So any comments from the public? Going back to us, ready to vote on Alex?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Next up, to here, consider and act upon an appointment to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, this is Mary S. Byer, Democrat, 4720 Congress Street, term from 1114 to 1118, and this is to fill a vacancy for Patty Palmer, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Let's see, any comments from the board? Is Misty here? There you are, there you are, hiding, you're hiding behind two other people. Any comments?
I'm happy she's getting involved, I worked with her on the Village Improvement Society, I look forward to her contributions.
Yeah, it's a challenging committee, but I'm sure you're up for the task.
And Misty, we first met when you were on the forestry committee and helped us sort that out, and I appreciate you stepping up to volunteer on this, and also, in this day and age, and with everything we have going on, is also a very important committee with some very important functions. When the town was smaller, perhaps not quite as challenging, but right now it is, so thank you very much for stepping up and helping us out here.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board, all in favor? Aye. Misty, thank you very much. All right. Item 10, this is the Mill Hill Elementary School Building Committee Appointments, and this requires RTM approval. These up. There we are. And this is to, okay to take these all at once?
Yes, please do.
This is to here, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Mill Hill Elementary School Building Committee. One, Harry Ackley, Senior, 25 Wagon Hill Road, Jeremy Budzian, 45 Geneva Terrace, Hector Gillan, 1043 Mill Hill Terrace, Jason Lee, Sunny Ridge Avenue, Heather Noka, 211 Warner Hill Road, Thomas Quinn, 88 Mero Street, Norma Roberts, Norman Roberts, sorry, 1210 South Pine Creek Road, Melanie Rogiri, 238 Warner Hill Road, and Andrew Sheriff, 1 River Lane. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
Good luck. This has been a project which the Board of Selectmen absolutely supports, the renovation there, the question is how we go about doing it. There's obviously been a lot of drama and talking back and forth amongst the three boards, and you guys have a big task to fill. I have no doubt that this commission will thoroughly vet, when the charge comes out, what your goal and mission is, and come through. We have enough prior history of top-tier members who've served on other school building committees who have volunteered to step up to do this as well, so I think we have a really good balance between what I've read in the resumes and past, past building committee members to make sure that we get the best recommendations from you, so I wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Mr. Bateson?
Yes, same thing, I echo exactly what Chris said, it's going to be a challenge, you face a lot. Tom, I'm so happy you're back, I can't believe it, you're a glutton for punishment.
I'm giving you a right adventure, yeah.
And for the years of, Harry Ackley, Jason Lee, the other people that have participated, I'm glad you're stepping, getting back involved, but you know, to say what Chris, you know, I followed this at the selectmen level when we were talking about renovation, wholeheartedly support the renovation, but where we want to land with, you know, the capacity is, you know, it's going to generate a town-wide discussion, I'm ready for it, I know my fellow members are ready for it, and I hope you guys are ready for it, and ready to go forward.
Okay, and yes, we've had a chance to talk with everybody individually leading up to this process, we had some good conversations about where we are, what the town needs, and what, at least through Phase 1, we need out of the building committee, so I want to thank you all for volunteering and stepping up to that.
Before we go on, can, can we just make sure that we get the party affiliations on this before we send it to the RTM?
We certainly can, party affiliations aren't necessarily...
We don't have to do that for building committees?
It's my recollection that traditionally, we've had party affiliations on there. The technicality is we don't need them because it's not, doesn't have to be party balanced.
Oh, there's no minority, oh, there is.
Oh, because it's a temporary committee, it's not a standing committee.
Gotcha.
However, to your point, Ed, I think it makes sense, I think we've always had them on there, so I think it makes sense to have, I'm not sure why...
That's why I looked, I looked at Holland Hill and I saw it.
I'm not sure why they're not there, and just also to be clear, we do try and have party balance anyway, it's not a charter requirement on a, on a temporary committee or a building committee.
Okay.
But we've tried to kind of do our best to maintain that anyway.
As long as we're not violating anything, I'm good.
No, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, but I like, I like your suggestion about having them on there. And Sheila, could you make a note of that, so we get that change made? So any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the pass unanimous, thank you, and congratulations to the committee. We'll no doubt see you back here again soon. All right, with, is, Bill Hurley just got here. Guys, with your permission, I'd like to move the item 12 up and take it next, out of order.
Sure.
Just because this is really more of a public service announcement, and I just want to get it in after the appointments before we get into everything else, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Hurley, can we take you next, please?
Good afternoon, Selectmen, I'm Bill Hurley, speaking here on behalf of Joe Michelangelo and Scott Hartlet of our DPW. The Southern Connecticut Gas Company has informed the town of Fairfield of their pending plans to upgrade the natural gas mains in the beach neighborhood. The existing mains in this area are generally 70 years old, low-pressure cast iron pipes which have a tendency to be brittle when you do some construction near them. Southern Connecticut Gas will be replacing these pipes with higher-pressure, smaller-diameter PVC pipe. This is current industry standard, and according to Southern Connecticut Gas, will improve performance... will improve performance and reliability. This work will require excavations in the town road for the main gas line and individual home services. Fairfield DPW will be overseeing the excavation and any temporary and permanent payment restoration work. The Fairfield Police Department will also be overseeing the traffic control during all the construction work. I do have a list of the 30 streets, if you want, I can wrap them off quickly, or tell people-
Can you just send them to us?
... refer them to their website, and, or-
Yeah, let's, well, we've got those on the website, don't we, with, I think we already got notice out to the area to do that, but we'll certainly make sure those are publicized, and we'll get those, perhaps we can get those to Fair TV, so they can include them on there.
Okay. Anyway, Reef Road is expected to be the first road under construction, expected the week of June 11th. The work on this, on these roads, the 30 roads, would be expected to continue throughout 2018. And in some cases, final paving will be performed in the spring of 2019. Southern Connecticut Gas will provide a time schedule when the specific roads are to be under construction, and the town will be posting that information. There's also tentative plans by the gas company for another, you could call it another phase or another project, 2019, for the other parts of the beach area that were not included in this part. And in general, a quick description would be, for the 2019, or the next phase, is east of Penfield Road, south of the Old Post Road, you have Long Island Sound, and South Benson, so it kind of gives you an area that they'll be doing in their next phase.
Yep.
So I'm here to answer any questions which you might have.
I might, for clarification, Bill, thank you for that. We, the reason we have this on our agenda today is we're trying to get the word out, we received very late notice from Southern Connecticut Gas about this. They're basically, when you look at the map, it looks like the entire beach area, in the next two years, will get, be dug up with pipes being replaced.
In the summertime, too, right?
Through the summer, what are the-
Yeah, mainly in the summertime, and the fall.
Okay, so it, given that, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to get the word out to our citizens that this is gonna be going on. It's not something the town has control over. Do we have any flexibility with Southern Connecticut in terms of what they do, when they, I mean-
No, not, not really, and then just the typical shut-off time for, because you'd be transferring, you know, old lines to new lines. Typical shut-off time is November 1st to May 1st, according to their website. So that kind of limits our schedule, or their schedule.
Okay, because I know there'll be a lot of questions from beach area residents saying, do they have to do it in the summer? So the answer you're saying is yes on that. And importantly, it's, this is not a town project. This is Southern Connecticut Gas. They're in control of it, and it's a huge amount of work going through. When I looked at the map, I thought they were doing the entire beach area. Bill said just 30 roads, it looked like they were doing all of them from the map. So we will keep, keep this information updated on our website as soon as we get it from Southern Connecticut Gas. The reason for making a, this kind of news splash here at the Board of Selectmen meeting is because they told us so late, and we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to get the word out to the beach area community. Any comments?
Bill, did they give the construction time, are they gonna be doing this at night, on any of the roads?
I would assume it's their typical schedule. I haven't, they did not report that information to us, we can check that. But I'm assuming it's that, you know, 7, 7:30 to 3:30, 4 o'clock kind of timeframe.
Okay.
Ed?
A quick thing, I know in your presentation, you said they're gonna start Reef Road shortly, within a couple of weeks?
Yeah, actually, for next week, June 11th would be-
And then I sort of heard you say, final paving is in 2019, that's-
Well, that's for, it's the 30 roads. Reef Road, we're assuming they will get done this calendar year, obviously.
So you're-
But some of the ones that they might not start until, say, August, September-
They'll have a temporary patch until?
Right, that's correct.
All right, but are we, is there some brain behind the operation that's gonna say, okay, Reef Road, a major road, we want a permanent patch done before, we don't want to go a whole winter?
Oh, yeah, they'll be periodic updates and meetings with the DPW and Southern Connecticut Gas.
All right, because I think you, somebody on our side should take point on that and say, okay, the main roads, we don't want a temporary patch to go into spring, because you know what happens-
Yep, that's a good point.
When that happens. And also too, you said, the main we're replacing, are they doing the service laterals as well, to the houses?
Yeah, yeah.
All these, have all the people been notified, I mean, that's- It's going right up to their meter on the house?
It's going, at least to the curb, yeah, to the curb, yeah. It's, the schedule phasing is they'll be installing the main lines, providing new services, they transfer the old service to the new service, then they have to disconnect the old service, then there's probably some sort of final inspection, and then the final payment restoration.
See if we can get some free sidewalks out of this. Seriously, if they're going in-
If they dig that up, then that would be their responsibility.
No asphalt, we want this cement.
Again, the point you're making, I think, is it's gonna be traumatic in the beach area, and that's why we're doing everything we can to get the word out.
Yeah, you've been down Roland Road.
Oh, yeah.
It's bad now, do you imagine digging it up?
All right. Bill, anything else?
Uh, no.
Any further questions from the board?
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you for helping us get the word out, and we'll continue to have updates go out from the town.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, next up, the Fairfield History Museum. To hear an update on the Fairfield Museum and History Center on activities planned for the town green, Mr. Jaylee, please fill us in.
Good evening, everyone, Mike Jaylee from the Fairfield Museum. Actually have a little packs of my stuff, I've got three of them there for you guys. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you all some of the exciting things that the museum has planned for the summer on the town green. Just to, I know you all were familiar with the Fairfield Museum, but just to give you a little context about what we've been up to. On an annual basis, the Fairfield Museum welcomes about 37,000 visitors from throughout New England to our town for learning opportunities, exhibitions, education programs, school visits, and special events. Of those visitors, about 4,000 of them are students that visit from over 62 schools from throughout Fairfield County. More than half of those students are Fairfield students that visit the museum each year. Starting this year, we are accepting, we are welcoming all 3rd and 5th graders to be very much a part of our programming. And that increase in school visitation increases by an average of 15 to 20% each year. So it's a real growth area that we're providing services to our Fairfield schools. Education and civic engagement are really at the core of what we do at the Fairfield Museum. And our mission over the past decade, we've worked closely with teachers, curriculum supervisors, and administrators at Fairfield's public schools to ensure that those programs strongly support national, state, and local learning goals. The museum also has a very strong track record of providing professional development programs for Fairfield teachers, to ensure that they have the tools and the resources for successful implementation of their curriculum, their social studies curriculum, including lessons plans, classroom kits, teacher guides, pre and post-field trip activities, and what have you. More than 100 teachers just this last year benefited from our professional development programs that we offer. We host, as well as that, about 200 adult and family programs for the community each year, including free family activities, like our Memorial Day picnic, which we just had. We had probably 300 or 400 people there. And our very successful Halloween on the Green, which has quickly become a beloved town-wide tradition. Our monthly museum after dark events for adults also features topical lectures, community forums, workshops, and panel discussions that provide very unique opportunities for us to engage with diverse opinions, and to come together as a community to discuss the critical issues that are facing our community. We also present several topical exhibitions each year, each of which delve both into the history of our community, but also, more importantly, important issues of our time, where we try to inspire and form conversation about the future of our community. We have an exhibition up right now that we've done in collaboration with the Connecticut Institute for Refugees and Immigration, called "An American Story", that explores the history of refugees and immigration to our community, and explores this within the national debate that's going on. We've also done exhibitions in the past, called Rising Tides, on the history of environmental impact from the sound and storms here, and things that we're doing as a community going forward for preparing for climate resilience. We're in, it's important to sort of, I think, contextualize this, because I think a lot of people assume that we're a part of the town, but the Fairfield Museum is an independent, nonprofit museum, and we're able to do all this really based on the generosity of a community-wide donors, corporations, and businesses here in our community that allow us to put these on. I think one of the areas in our partnership with the town that we're most proud of is the revitalization of the town green, and that's what I want to talk to you about today. What we've been doing over the last few years through planning and through other discussions with town agencies is to look at ways that we can transform the town green to become a thriving center for art, history, and community. Over the past few years, the Fairfield Museum raised more than $750,000 in state and federal funding to complete a major renovation of the town-owned Burr Mansion. And we raised an additional $280,000 in grant funding and private donations to complete the restoration of the town-owned Sun Tavern, Victorian Cottage, and Bar. It also is important to note that DPW contributed a lot of work to help those projects get completed as well. We reopened those properties last year to the community, and in so doing, created kind of a really wonderful, unique historic campus that has provided the foundation for a lot of the programming that we're rolling out this year. Our work with the town on the restoration of those properties has received the prestigious Connecticut Preservation Award from the Connecticut Trust for Restorative Preservation, as well as a Leadership in History Award from the American Association for State and Local History. With those capital improvements completed, the museum is now moving forward with an exciting vision for Fairfield's town green to be a dynamic hub of culture and creative activity for our community that will help make Fairfield a thriving cultural destination, and significantly boost our regional economy. One thing to note, I think is interesting, we worked over the past year with graduate students from Sacred Heart University on an economic impact analysis to look at the kinds of programs that the museum's doing, the visitors that we bring to this area, and the related economic impact they have for the town. It was their estimate that the museum currently generates about $2.2 to $2.5 million in related economic activity for our community. Here on the green for the summer, we've just opened the historic properties for the season, and this year began an exciting new junior docent program where we have 14 Fairfield High School students, aged 13 to 18, who will be giving public tours on the weekends at Sun Tavern and Victorian Cottage, and leading some of our fantastic family activities. This is really a wonderful way for our students to engage with their history, and to share their, their studies with the rest of the community. This coming summer, we're also working with the new Fairfield Center Stage Theater Group to present a series of free performances of "The Music Man", that's on that little card I gave you. Those will be June 28 through 30. Also, on July 15th, we'll be hosting free outdoor concert by the Connecticut Symphony of Winds, and the Greater Bridgeport Youth Symphony, too bad Misty left, she's been working with me on that. We'll be presenting two free performances, July 22 and 29. The museum has, for many years, done a Burning of Fairfield Walkie Tour on the anniversary of when Fairfield was torched by the British during the Revolution. And this year, we've engaged a really talented, young Fairfield theater writer and director, Alison Benko, who's rewriting the tour and creating a really wonderful immersive theater experience on the burning, that should be a lot of fun. So we're looking forward to having a lot of tours around that, which will be July 7, 8. On August 11th, we're going to be presenting, once again, our very popular Gustav Whitehead Fly-In, celebrating the incredible aviation accomplishment, this is something close to my Tetris art, I know. Celebrating the incredible aviation accomplishments of Fairfield's own first-in-flight inventor. And in August, the museum will be presenting Free Jazz Fridays at the Fairfield Museum, which will be a series of five free jazz concerts on the green behind the museum, featuring some of the best musicians from our area, including our own Brian Torf up at Fairfield University. Our school tours will begin again in September, and then in October, we'll be presenting another wildly successful Halloween on the town green, hopefully this year without rain. This is really just a taste in the highlights of the many exciting programs and events and performances that the museum is organizing this year. And as I mentioned, we're really able to present these, thanks to the tremendous generosity of individual donors, the business community, and foundations and others, who I think believe like we do, and I think all of us do, that the arts can be a really powerful economic engine for our community. And we're fortunate, I think, here in Fairfield, to have a number of great cultural organizations that all work very closely together to try to put Fairfield on the map as a cultural destination. And I think you're beginning to see the wonderful benefits of that, from increased restaurant usage, and all the other sort of related economic activities. The museum is really proud of our work for the community, and we're honored to have such a supportive partnership with the town to be able to do that. And we look forward to working together on future improvements to the Fairfield Town Green, parking, pedestrian access, and other things that continue to make this a really wonderful destination for our community and visitors to the area. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that, I gave you a little schedule, so,
and some newspaper stuff that's going out about the green.
No, thank you much, any comments from the board?
I would say, I'm looking forward to seeing "The Music Man", I think that's great, I'm a big fan of the outdoor arts, whether it's music, or, you know, the Shakespeare in the Park type thing, so I hope this starts a really cool, growing trend that becomes a yearly thing, maybe a couple times a year. The other thing I'd like to do is thank you for all you've done in organizing this, and helping add to what you said, putting Fairfield on the map. It is becoming more and more noticeable. And someone who grew up in these areas, on this green, as a kid, like living off Fern Street, coming here all the time, the difference between when I was a kid to what it looks like now is unbelievable. It has not been easy work, but this entire town hall property looks fantastic. And you've been spearheading it from the beginning, so I really appreciate your efforts for what you've done now, but for future generations of Fairfielders, thank you.
No, I agree with it, I think it's great. I never envisioned the property being used this way, and I like it. So, good luck with it.
Well, thank you, and I think it's worth noting that we are doing this as sensitively as possible to the neighborhood. We've been in communication to immediate neighbors, and, you know, this is a, this is a learning process. We're rolling this stuff out this year, we're gonna be in contact with them to make sure that we honor not only this neighborhood, but also the history of this really wonderful park space that we have. So we're gonna continue to try to do this, to realize the vision, but do it in a sensitive way.
Mike, thank you again, I know it, we've been talking over the years, and your vision is really, really helping drive this, and that's tremendous. But if I had to boil it down to one concept, you're really taking the museum and really bringing it to life for everybody, so I want to thank you for that. And you've got some phenomenal gifts in the gift shop, and you didn't even mention that.
Oh, yes, well-
I just saw your new, your new sweatshirt, your new sweatshirts on there.
Sweatshirts are cool, and if you all haven't had a chance to see, we had a really wonderful gift to the community this summer. There's an extraordinary Westport photographer, Stephen Wilks, who's known internationally, who donors here in Fairfield commissioned to do one of his incredible day-to-night photographs of Jennings Beach, that was gifted to the museum and to the community. So come see it, it's really cool. And we're selling posters of that.
Mike, thank you very much for the update.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, next up, item 13. From the Parks and Rec Commission. To approve the naming of a walkway at Lieutenant Owen Fish Park in memory of Barbara H. Levine, as recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission. May I have a motion to put that before us?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Calabrese, you're on.
Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks Reparation. I'm gonna ask Mr. Stephen Levine to join me up at the podium as well. Assuming everybody has a copy of the letter that Mr. Levine sent in. He is asking, he has asked the Parks and Rec Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, you guys, to name a memorial path in name of his, his late mother, Barbara H. Levine. Some background on it, grew up on-
Ridgewood?
Ridgeview. Ridgeview. Ridgeview Avenue, which used to be a dead end, which backed up to Melville Avenue, which was also a dead end. Over the years, they got rid of the dead end and connected the two streets, so it ended up being one street, but this backs up to Owen Fish Park. Over the years, Mrs. Levine had some medical issues, and had to have a cane pretty much to get around, and she spent a lot of time walking down those streets, going to Owen Fish Park. There is a path, there was a path, it was a dirt path, that went from Melville Avenue to Owen Fish Park. Over the years, probably back in the 80s?
Even before that.
70s, 80s, they ended, the DPW ended up putting some rocks that blocked the path, and that was kind of where the kids went. Mrs. Levine not able to get around that much, without use of her cane, contacted the town and asked for them to remove the rocks, so she could have access to the park. The town complied, and over the years, eventually paved it to make it easier for her to get in there. Now, it is completely paved, the rocks are removed off to the side. When I received this email, I went and met Mr. Levine out at the property, we walked it together, his idea was to put a sign right at the, at the entrance. After seeing the property, there's a beautiful rock that, I believe, used to block the path, right there at the entryway. I thought if we were gonna put a plaque or anything, that would be the perfect spot for it, you know, in memory of his mother. So we brought this to the Parks and Rec Commission. So, we brought this to the Parks and Rec Commission, they approved it to be brought forth to you guys. So, here we are, and I don't know if Mr. Levine wants to add anything, but that's the brief synopsis of...
I'll just say, I think you explained it perfectly, and it would make my family very happy. None of them know I'm doing this, so it'll be a surprise.
Well, it's on TV.
Well, no, if they watch it. They didn't know I had started the process.
All right. Any comments from the board?
No, listen, it sounds good to me. It sounds like your families loved the property for...
My father still lives in the house.
Yeah, since the 70s, and that passed.
60s, yeah.
60s, so that pass probably been used more by your family than anybody else, so it makes sense to me.
When we were kids, we used to just climb over the rocks.
Yeah.
My mother couldn't do that.
As long as Parks and Rec is good with it, I'm good with it.
Yep. No, I think it's a, thank you for bringing this before us and bringing this to Parks and Rec, and I certainly support the Parks and Rec Commission in this regard. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations. All right. Item 14. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Town Attorney. Resolve that the amended corporation agreement for housing the elderly between the Fairfield Housing Authority and the Town of Fairfield, covering property known as 15 Pine Tree Court B and hereby is approved. Further resolve that the First Selectman is hereby authorized and directed to sign said corporation agreement on behalf of the Town of Fairfield. That's it? May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. And Attorney Lesser?
Attorney Law. I'm here at the request, actually, of the Housing Authority. As you can see from the backup, there was an agreement that was entered into 50-some-odd years ago for Pine Tree, I think it's Pine Tree Lane, and it provides that in lieu of paying taxes and such that they pay, at the time they were paying 10%, now they've upped it to 12.5% of the rent that they receive. I do have Carol Martin and Brian LeClaire, who represents the Housing Authority here, if you have any questions about that. But I guess they're doing some construction and refinancing, and they've asked that we do a new one here, and it's really the same as the one that had been done 50 years ago, with the exception of primarily the...
10%, now to 12.5%.
And there's a change on page three also, right? Are those the two changes?
The old page three?
Well, I'm looking at, yes. One of these things that talks about, maybe it's the old agreement I'm looking at.
Elderly and non-elderly?
Yeah.
That's what you're looking for?
Yep.
Keep going. There. That's what you're talking about?
Yes. And it's also on a couple pages earlier, right here. Could you fill us in on...
What non-elderly is?
Going from 10% to 12.5%, obviously, is, sounds good. Can you fill us in on the elderly and non-elderly components of this?
You're looking at this cooperation agreement?
Yes.
Between, for housing for the elderly?
The 1964 agreement.
I'm looking at the marked up...
And what paragraph?
Okay, let's start with paragraph one. Yeah, all I'm trying to get to is just have you explain to us what the changes are.
I think that, I think the main changes are that originally, we were talking about building roads and such, that's been taken out. And other than that, I don't really think that there are any substantive changes, which is not what I could see.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're talking about housing for the elderly and non-elderly, so I'm trying to get an understanding of what that means.
Perhaps Carol could explain that better than I.
I think Carol Martin could best explain that.
You need to be at the mic, Brian, if you're going to...
For the record, Brian LeClaire, Berkshire Moses, Councilor for the Housing Authority, with me is Carol Martin, Director of the Authority. Again, the agreement is done back, originally was done back in 1964, and it's still in effect for this project. Major renovations have occurred at Pine Tree over the past few years. It's basically been demolished and reconstructed. We have to have a new agreement and modify the existing agreement to be consistent with the Connecticut General statutes in effect right now. And we're paying the maximum amount, the Authority is now paying the maximum amount required by the Connecticut General statutes, 12.5% to 10%. A few little changes have occurred over the years regarding maintenance of the roads. The town has now constructed an entire new project with, the Authority, I should say, has constructed an entire new project and infrastructure, including reconfiguration of the roads, sewers, piping, and all of that. The changes made, if you have specific questions, you know, we basically are amending the old agreement. It's not a local authority, it's now called the Housing Authority, as the statutes have developed over the last 50 years, that's one change. It's both for elderly and non-elderly residents who are eligible to live in Housing Authority property. It talks about, we've approved, we've received approval from the Housing Commissioner of the State of Connecticut, not the Public Works Commissioner of the State of Connecticut. We specify the exact address of the project, we cite the correct statute, we talk about the rent, 12.5% of shelter rent for moderate rental housing units, and that's what this is, moderate rental housing units, is 12% being paid of the shelter rent to the Town of Fairfield. Talks about municipal services, and deleted was that the town agrees to cooperate with the Housing Authority regarding the development of the project, citing some statutes, because the Authority on its own redeveloped this project without assistance from the town. If you have specific questions, or if you want something from Carol?
Just, probably just two things. One, it's called the Housing Authority now, not the Fairfield Housing Authority.
That's correct. It's the Housing Authority of the Town of Fairfield.
Okay. In terms of the, I don't have a problem with that name change, in fact, it'll clarify some things and make it sound less like it's a town department, so that certainly will free up a few questions, I suspect. However, are there any other places Fairfield Housing Authority has mentioned, either town charter, town code, town, anything that we also have to get modified?
No. I would say, no. You know, you had asked a question before, and I think if you read the new agreement, and I would ask the Director, but it seems like the people who can live here are now expanded, they don't necessarily have to be elderly, as long as they qualify. I think that's, you asked about the change elderly and non-elderly.
Right, that's...
But that's based on statute, right?
If you can, if you can fill us in a bit on that in terms of what the intent, and I guess to Mr. Bates' question, is that a statute requirement, or is that just something that, a change that we're doing for the benefit of our community?
Sure. Good evening, Selectmen, thank you so much for your time. Carol Martin, Executive Director of Fairfield Housing Authority. Originally in 64, the cooperation agreement was signed, the state brought funds to construct the project, and it was done under the state elderly program. When we redeveloped the property, we moved the project from under the state elderly statutes over to the state moderate rental statutes. And so, really, what's driving the revisions to this document are twofold. One is changes in state law over the years, that nobody ever actually updated the agreement. There's, you know, frankly, no need to. And second of all, to make it consistent now with the new project. And so, a lot of the things that have been amended here really just bring it up to being consistent with all the other documents that we did through the transfer of the property to a ground lease and getting tax credit investors to the project and actually constructing it.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Got none.
I think that addresses your elderly and non-elderly, right?
Yep.
Looks like it already happened.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Thank you.
Ready to vote?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item up, I think is also from the Town Attorney, actually from the Town Assessor, item 15.
I'll make a motion to waive reading.
You're done, unless you want to stay.
I'm sorry. I couldn't get your money off.
That's okay. You got approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Allison.
I'll make a motion to waive reading.
All right.
Good motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Stan, do you want to summarize this just for the folks at home, so everybody knows what we're talking about, even if we didn't read the entire motion? Oh, and just before we do that, can I, a motion to, the motion says to hear, consider an act, and they have a motion to accept?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
All right. Now, will you give us the executive summary of what this is that we're looking at?
Very quickly. Operation Hope, obviously, runs these low-income, moderate-income housing projects. They've always been exempted. Our tax assessor didn't feel that they should be exempted, and so what we're doing is, under the statute, the town passed an ordinance allowing the abatement of taxes for certain properties. The town, as part of that ordinance, delegated the authority to grant the abatements to the Board of Selectment. So, under statute, typically, it's the legislative body, which in our town is the RTM, which grants abatements. They have granted that authority to you, they've delegated it to you. The procedure is that the tax assessor will take an application or a recommendation, investigate, make a recommendation to this body as to whether he feels the taxes should be abated. Then, the owner of the property will have to enter into a housing agreement with the town, because the statute provides, and if you look at the housing agreement that's attached here too, Section 3 talks about the use of the abated taxes. And I'm just, they're supposed to use it for one or more of the following purposes: to reduce rents below the levels, which would be achieved in the absence of the abatement, or to affect occupancy of such housing by persons and families of varying income levels within limits determined by the Connecticut Commissioner of Housing, or his successor by regulation, or to improve the quality and design of such housing, or to provide necessary related common facilities or services. So, in order for the, these organizations, and there may be more in the future, these properties are all owned by Operation Hope or affiliates, so they're all really Operation Hope properties, even though they're in different names. Legal title is held by Operation Hope, by O.H. Properties LLC, Micah Housing Inc., 31 Soundview Avenue LLC, 145 Grassmere Avenue LLC. They're all, from what I understand, administered by Operation Hope. So, Operation Hope will have to enter into these housing agreements, agreeing to use the money they save for the purposes set forth in the agreement. That's basically it, and in the future, we may get more, but it's for this low-income housing, and it gives them the abate. Apparently, they've always had an exemption.
So, if they've always had exemption, why are we going through this process change right now?
The assessor, who is away and can't be here tonight, said that this is the way you have to do it. We can't exempt, he's not legally allowed to exempt these properties, but there's a statute that allows the abatement of the taxes on these properties.
So, we've been abating them for years?
That's apparently, or they may have been exempt, they may not have been, just simply not have been taxed.
So, the assessor's not here tonight?
Correct.
So, I've got a couple things I would like to bounce off the assessor on this. How, so this is a direct appeal from assessor's judgment to the Board of Selectment to abate? I understand, I understand the Operation Hope properties, and I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I recognize that the Town of Fairfield might have other people who also want abatements, so what is the...
There's a procedure that's set forth in the, in the ordinance that was passed by the RTM, and what it says is that they submit to the tax assessor. The tax assessor shall investigate the circumstances regarding such real property, and if the tax assessor finds that the property qualifies for tax abatement pursuant to Section 8-215 of the General Statutes, and the provision to this article shall prepare a resolution regarding statements, submit the resolution to the Board of Selectment along with his recommendation. I'm paraphrasing. Said housing agreement shall be considered by the Board of Selectment in accordance with its procedures. That's this.
Yep.
The recommendation of the tax assessor shall be considered by the Board of Selectment, but shall not be binding upon said body.
That's my question. Are we going to get properties which the recommendation is no? And now, the Board of Selectment has to turn around. So, people are going to submit it to us, he's going to say, no, you aren't abatable, and now, the board gets to make a decision, not based upon law, but based upon what our feelings are towards that property.
I think the resolution has to come, has to be initiated by the assessor.
Yeah.
So, they have to submit it to him. He investigates. If he says no, under this ordinance, it dies there. You won't get it.
Yeah, I was on the RTM when we passed this. If it doesn't have the full backing of the assessor, if he kills it, it doesn't come before us.
All right. And this is also...
So, you won't have that decision to make.
But just to be clear, this is regarding certain low and moderate income properties?
Correct.
All right, so it, and are those defined by deed restrictions?
Well, I think, there may be deed restrictions, but they also have to enter into this housing agreement. So, and it talks about who can, who can live there and what they have to do with the money that they save. So, and they also have, we have the right to look at their books and investigate and do all sorts of things. Make sure that they're...
And I think part of the issue is that, as much as we understand what Operation Hope is, they set up these houses, I think that the town is both aware of it and supports it, there've been a lot of changes in state statutes over time, and part of this is reflective of what the state statutes now say with clarity, or lack of clarity, but we're clearing it up for the Town of Fairfield, in terms of our process for doing this.
So, we just got the Operation Hope properties here. How big is the total list of abatable properties? And like...
This is, this is all that I know right now. I don't know what else there is, but I'm not saying that there isn't anything else. But...
All right.
I just want to make sure, I know the RTM just passed this, if we enter into these agreements, just make sure we allow for that window when an ordinance takes a new effect. I think it's whatever, 14 or 15 days?
I think it's the referendum period, I think.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, just make sure you allow for that.
Yeah, this is really, the import of this, it takes effect July 1st, really, for these, is where it matters. The tax here.
Yeah, can I just follow up? I don't mean to take an item out of order, but I see further down here, we have the approved an abatement for the grant list. Does that have to do with these properties above?
Not, not these.
That's something different?
Not these. And the tax collector's here to cover that with us.
Okay, all right. So, I'm going, we're not losing any more money. These are properties we've never...
That's my understanding.
We've been exempting them, but legally, there's no reason for the assessor to exempt them, so he's saying, you have to do this through this abatement vehicle.
That's my understanding of it. That's the way it's...
So, it sounds like he just came in, new assessor, found this, and said, we really shouldn't have been doing it this way, we really should be doing it this way.
Yeah, and if I, without complicating things too much, I think part of the issue is, if we've just been providing housing, it's one thing. If you're charging rent for housing, then the question is, does that get into a taxable situation?
All right, I'm good. Anything else? Thank you all.
All right, certainly, if you'd like the assessor here at another time to address this more fully.
I think I'd probably just call him off, Brian, and ask some questions.
All right. All right. The item is before us. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, and we move on to item 18, from the tax collector. To consider and approve an abatement of taxes for 2014...
16.
Hmm?
16.
16, sorry. Didn't have my glasses on, my apologies. Sixteen. To consider and approve an abatement of taxes for 2014, 15, and 16 grand list taxes due July 15 through June 2018 for 21 and 63 Durrell Drive in a total amount of $25,848.88. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Dave, please introduce yourself and then step us through this.
Sure, Dave Kuzuski, tax collector. Good evening. So I'm presenting this before you. It is related to the last item, basically because we're not allowed to exempt these properties. The way this, the way the process works is the taxes get abated. So there is, the taxes do get assessed, they get on the books, but then on July 1, they hit the books. And then the following June, they get abated. And the reason why I'm before you now was, this was something I was unaware of because of the retirement of the collector before me and the assessor retiring sort of around the same time. So this is something that the assessor and I sort of, we discovered and had not been done the last three years. So I'm kind of playing catch up here. The last time this does it, this occurs, procedural matter every single June. It has not occurred since June of 2015. So I'm just catching up and abating the last three years that have been on the books.
Okay, any questions from the board?
So we've already collected these taxes?
Yep.
No?
No, we have not.
So it's not a refund?
No, we have not collected them, they've just been on the books. And per the agreement, they're supposed to be abated, so they're just being taken off.
Taken off the books.
In the event that, you know, it does sell, there's no issues because it should be taxed there in the first place.
And it meets the assessor's criteria for the abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, and it also.
So it is related to the above item?
Yeah.
Very similar. Okay, I'm good.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, if I tell everybody we're gonna postpone those two items at the end?
Sure.
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I didn't, thought you were here for an earlier appointment. I didn't realize you might be staying for this. We are gonna postpone the Mill Hill Elementary School Building Committee Charge discussion until, my apologies, on not seeing you sooner. I thought you were here for part of the support for the other item in the Mill Hill Building Committee. I didn't realize you were staying for this too. My apologies. We'll also be postponing item 21, the private executive session with the town attorney. However, now we're up to item 17 from the Director of Community and Economic Development, which requires RTM approval. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolve that the applications received under the Neighborhood Assistance Act, NAA, program are hereby approved and that the Director of Community and Economic Development is hereby designated as a municipal liaison for the town of Fairfield for this program. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
The item is now before us. Mr. Barnhart, fill us in.
Mark Barnhart, Director of Community and Economic Development. This is a program, a state program that the town has participated in for the last several years. It provides a tax credit against the state tax, corporate tax liability to businesses that make a charitable contribution or gift to a qualifying community program that's run by a tax-exempt, non-proper municipal agency. So the requirements for our participation are fairly minimal. We would need to designate a municipal liaison, which traditionally has been either me or my predecessors. It's been offered out of my office. We need to conduct a public hearing and the applications received need to be vetted and approved by the legislative body prior to, and submitted to the Department of Revenue Services prior to July 1, in this case, July 2. We are, this year we received eight applications, they're all attached. Many of these organizations have participated in the program in years past. So you may already be familiar with them and the work that they do. Be happy to answer any questions. Basically, there's two different types of tax credits available to the business that makes the gift. Most programs qualify for a 60% tax credit. Those that are related to energy conservation improvements are qualified for dollar-for-dollar. Typically, the program is oversubscribed, so the state takes caps the amount of tax credits available under the program. And if there's more applications and there are funds allotted, they'll reduce the tax credit accordingly. So we haven't seen that 60% or 100% tax credit in years now. Almost half the municipalities in the State of Connecticut have not participated in the program.
Any comments or questions?
Let's see this read.
All right, yep. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, thank you. Now we're up to item 18.
Yes.
All right. Director of Community and Economic Development, this also requires RTM approval. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolve that the program year 44, which is October 1, 2018 to September 30, 2019, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, is hereby approved in the amount of $538,200, which includes entitlement grant funds of $508,143 and program income of $30,057. And further resolve that Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all necessary documents that facilitate the town's participation in said CDBG program. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second? I'll second. All in favor, or not in favor? Mark, fill us in.
Again, the town has been a participant in the federal Community Development Block Grant Program for many years, probably 44 years, given that we're in program year 44 coming up. The town is a, is an entitlement community, meaning that we can, we receive funding through this program from the federal government each year without needing to make a competitive application. Towns are provided general, some broad discretion in terms of how they allocate the funds, provided they're eligible for funding and they meet a national objective. One of three national objectives, the one that most typically applies in our case is that we demonstrate that it serves an area or persons of low to moderate income. We have to prepare a five-year consolidated plan. And each year we have to submit to HUD an annual action plan that relates the projects that we're proposing to fund back to the objectives and goals set forth in the consolidated plan. So each year we again solicit applications from nonprofit organizations, municipal agencies, and others as to projects or activities that should be funded. We prepare an allocation plan that is before you in terms of how we propose to utilize those funds for the upcoming year. And that needs to get to the RTM and then we'll have to submit it to HUD prior to the 45 days before the beginning of the program year with all of our justification and backup documentation. So happy to answer any questions you have. The funding has been pretty much stable. It's actually a small increase over the current year in terms of the entitlement grant of $508,000. And we allocate, we can allocate 15% to public service activities, 20% to general program administration, which basically forms one staff position and some other administrative costs. And the balance can go to other projects. Happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from the board?
I'm familiar with the program, it's hard to organize and.
You're very smart.
Yeah, I know the process, so.
All right, it's, this is the same program, we basically go every year, we go through the same. Plus, and you said we've got a bit of an increase this year, thankfully. But it's, it's, the percentage allocation and what we're going out to folks with is very similar to past years. From what I, okay. All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Then next up is the Mill Hill Elementary School Building Committee charged to consider and approve a charge, the Mill Hill Building School Committee, may I have a motion to postpone?
I'll make a motion.
To, to our next meeting date?
Sure.
A second? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all right. Tax collector. Item 20, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $20,920.10. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, any further discussions?
I've confirmed the numbers match.
Thank you. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
That's done. Town attorney, the private executive session, if we just take no action on that, that can come back to us next week or, in two weeks rather, or whenever. Item 22, to hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this meeting.
I have two quick things. One, I want to welcome Ed back.
Thank you, Chris.
Been about a year. Welcome back, Ed. Good to have you back. And the second is, I really want to go out of my way to thank everybody who helped organize Memorial Day Weekend last weekend. It was, it was a fantastic event. For those of you who don't get an opportunity to see what Fairfield puts forth, it's really, it's really fantastic. From the start of the weekend with the memorial mass at sea. It's the best service of the year, I think. And ends with the parade and the events on the green. It really is something good. And a big thank you to everybody from the police, to the fire, to the public works, to all the volunteers who got together to organize the parade. It's just fantastic. I can't rave about it enough and want to sincerely thank everybody involved.
Good, thank you. And I think we all agree with that. It was great to see after three years, we still remembered how to put out a parade. All right. If that's it, if that's the end of any new business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. 23 items.